So so far we have three out of six on council.
Is that counting you?
No, we have Shay and Wendy and Larry Welks.
Well, it looks like Travis maybe on here.
Yep. Okay, very good.
Travis is present, Anna is present.
Oh, good, Anna.
You just can't see us all on the screen.
Yeah.
Looks like Craig may have joined.
I think it's five thirty, Mayor.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the work session for Bella Vista City Council for February eighteen, twenty twenty-five. First item, it looks like we have all the council here, so that's great. First item is city council minutes from the regular meeting at January twenty-seven. Anybody see anything on there that they need to comment about or? Okay, next item is unfinished business. First one is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of City Bella Vista to increase procurement authority from thirty-five thousand to forty-two, nine, twenty-one. This is on second reading, so I don't know if anybody wants an explanation or more discussion about that.
I'll just remind everyone, this was an effort to adjust our ordinance to account for the state law change, which allowed for indexing of the required bid amount from thirty-five thousand and the inflation index now puts that number at forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one, and that'll be the number for five years. And so we decided to just change our ordinance to match that, and there are a couple of different provisions that were that are involved in that, if you can see in the ordinance, but that's really the intent.
Okay, thanks, Jason. I will mention that council, I put you all on gallery view, so you can just raise your hand the old-fashioned way if you want to say something. Second one is an ordinance amended section two, one forty, code enforcement officer of the Code of Ordinances of City Bella Vista to provide for development compliance officers defining their authority and for other purposes. And this is on second reading. Jason, was there any language change on this?
Uh, no, nothing's been changed from when it was on the agenda last month.
Okay. Uh, Larry?
If you recall, when Director Taylor presented this, it incorporated some of the planning staff as a part of the enforcement, code enforcement patrol, dividing the duties between our current department officers, the planning staff. So she explained that pretty well. I thought it was pretty clear they have an understanding mutually between them, which doesn't always necessarily need to be written out in the code, so.
Okay, so any more questions about that or comments? That's also on the second reading. Well, proceed to new business. First one's a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Linda Lloyd to position two and Jack Wagner to position three of the Bella Vista Planning Commission for terms occurring March one, twenty twenty-nine. I think most people know this, but in the case of Linda Lloyd, she's already on the commission. She was fulfilling somebody, she must have replaced somebody because she hadn't been on too many years yet. But we had a bunch of applications for this. I know there's been some questions about the applications. I think some of you asked to get, see all the applications and some didn't. So if anybody wants to, we could definitely get them to you before the meeting next week. Uh, Travis?
Yeah, I'd just like to see the applicants for all of the.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, we can do that. I believe we, well, we can do it for all the positions around here. They're all similar. But, you know, somebody asked me about it. I was mentioning, just in general, we're getting more people applying for these things than we used to. We're getting like this one and the arts council had like nine or ten applications. And there's quite a few for the active transportation. So it's kind of encouraging, people are so interested in being involved. And of course, it also makes it more competitive for, some of people have amazing backgrounds, you know, amazingly relevant for the position. But so I'll make sure we get those to everybody then before next week. Wendy?
Um, couple of questions. I, one, what happens if we don't approve of somebody on the, in, in, in general, who's been recommended for to fill position?
Uh, I can answer that. If you do not approve the appointment, then they are not appointed. There's still a vacancy and there would have to be another appointment.
Because would it be possible not to be a complete pain when there's more than one being approved or appointed for position to break those up? So it could be one by one?
Sure, and, and, and as I was looking at this, I, 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 in the past, we've not had a lot of opposition or question, but certainly going forward, we can, and in fact, even for this one, we can, I can split it out into two if you want to do that and make sure you each have a vote. It makes, you can still, it gets more complicated. You'd have to amend it and do stuff to not vote for one and vote for the other. So yes, we can do that in the future. And in fact, with Wanda's approval, what I can do is I'll just split this resolution into two and then we'll have one that would be a question about Linda Lloyd and then the other one about Mr. Wagner, so.
And a couple more questions, and also for the transportation one as well.
Yeah.
But also with Mr. Wag, I know Linda fairly well, is from her history in the city. With Mr. Wagner, how long has he been a resident of Bella Vista? I know he can't probably talk.
Oh, I, I, I don't know, the mayor, mayor probably knows, I don't know.
I wonder, Taylor, are you on a way?
Three years.
Gonna say I can pull up his application really quick and confirm real, one moment.
His resume, his resume is in the packet, I don't know if that.
Yeah, the resume doesn't state the amount of years lived, but the application form from the revised does. But he, and he is on here, but he is an attendee and I'm, I'm not sure if the attendees were given ability to speak or not, but a lot of the appointments are actually joining by attendee tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, if I could weigh in, I think, and I'll try to frame this correctly, but I think, in my opinion, anybody who ran for city council, I'm not saying that they need to be considered over and above, but you have people that have invested their time in those meetings, you know, at the planning level or the council meeting level that have shown up and showed a genuine interest. The concern that I have is a lot of the applicants might be motivated, you know, by other things that the, that retaining or possessing a planning spot, you know, they could, not that they could gain inside knowledge, but, you know, build a resume, so to speak. And I, and I think that, I think that people that run for office, I think they show a genuine regard for, you know, being active within the city. So, I mean, I'll just say that and leave it at that. But I would urge everybody to, you know, look at, you know, what the applicants, you know, the, the length of time in the community and how much interaction they've actually had within the community. And that, I'll leave it at that.
And Jack Wagner was a resident, has been a resident since March of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the next resolution, I, I do agree with that idea of splitting people up. I kind of see Wendy's point, if you have two people on there, maybe it's best to split them up and, and vote individually. I, I see the point there. Next one is resolution E, approving the mayor's appointments of Jonathan Neely and Nathan Boone to the Active Transportation Advisory Board for three-year terms beginning March one, twenty twenty-five. So this was another one where we had quite a few applications on the, on this particular board. And so we'll split this one up also. Is there any other particular questions about this one? Travis?
Yeah, I just have a little bit of a concern with casting my vote to, for these members to be on these boards or, you know, just because we didn't get to see any of the applicants. We only got to see who, who was presented to us. So it's like I'm rubber stamping the chair's decision without having any of, any additional information on the other applicants. And that doesn't make me feel comfortable. It makes me seem like, what's the point of me even voting for it? So I, I know you said you'll send us the applicants, but could you talk about the process of what happened behind closed doors to, to make these people, you know, better than the other applicants or what was the process like?
Uh, well, yeah, that's a good question. It probably varies a little bit from board to board, but not much. In the case of active transportation, I rely very much on the recommendation of the people in that area, which means Taylor Robertson and some of the people in her group. And I know, I've noticed with some of the things they do, they'll actually have a bunch of different people in their department vote and assign numbers. For instance, this person's number one, this is number two, this is number three. And then you can add up the numbers, you know, and see how people score in general. And, but that's an internal thing they do. I, I tend very much, I, I don't appoint my friends or people to give money to me. I rely very much on the people with the expertise, to be honest with you, to make a recommendation. Then they bring it to me and I can say, well, no, or this is a problem or whatnot. But nine times out of ten, I, I go with, with who they recommend. I feel like they have more knowledge, more expertise on it. Shay?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with my fellow council members that I did ask for every applicant for all of, for all the resolutions that we'll be voting on. And I was given those lists. So it does seem like we can ask for them and they'll be given. So I know just for active transportation alone, it looks like there were twenty-six total applicants and I do have access to all of them. So just wanted to share that in case it's helpful.
It is interesting that for the active transportation board, which is relatively new, I believe we've only had it for about a year. And for whenever we have job openings for trail managers or things like that, we always get quite a few applications more than for any other position. So there is a lot of interest in trails and a lot of people who have an intense interest in it, I would say. So it's interesting to see that. But, but generally speaking, you know, it, it depends on, on what area you're in, but I usually give it to the people with expertise in that area and, and have them sorted out. And really, if you look at the resumes and who they pick, it's, it's usually quite logical. Sometimes it's very obvious, but, you know, we're getting so many applications. A lot of times the second or third or fourth best person is, in fact, I have people say to me, hey, how did I not get this? You know, I work in this field, but these other people have an even better background because we're getting so much interest, so.
As it relates to these matters on board and commission appointments. Now, what I say doesn't apply to the A and P commission because it has special rules related to state law, but the mayor can make an appointment and then it's with your approval. But what you can't do is say, for example, we're gonna split these out and, but let's just say the mayor approved John Doe to be on the Active Transportation Advisory Board. You don't have the authority to amend that resolution and put someone else in there that you'd prefer. You get, you have to decide on whether or not you approve the mayor's appointment. The mayor has the appointment authority. So if you vote it down, which is your right as a council, then the mayor has to make another appointment, but you don't get to pick who that is. And then, I mean, so that's sort of the process. I just want to make sure that's clear because I know this is the first time we've done this for a lot of you and so I just want to make sure that that was understood. Now, let me explain one thing about the A and P commission because I think there's been some discussion about it and I'll just be very frank about the, the, one of the governing body positions was the, the last council decided to put the mayor on there, which the AG has opined is lawfully allowed. That, the governing body decides who the governing body's appointments to that commission will be. So in that circumstance, you could have amended a resolution and put another name in it and voted for that person to be appointed to that position on the A and P. And so I just want to make sure you understand that. And just, I'll go ahead and say this too. A and P commission, the governing body seats on the A and P commission are at the will of the council. So at any time, you can decide, you, somebody could, might not want to do it, somebody else could switch out. The majority of the council might decide they want someone else to do it. Uh, so there's, it's not for the remainder of a term, it's for the, at the, at the will of the council itself. So it's on there until the council decides that, that they don't want it. Either that person don't want to do it anymore, the council's made a decision, they don't want that person to do it anymore. So that, that commission's a little bit different because it's set up by rules according to state law. The appointments that are made to our other boards and commissions, notably our planning commission, board of adjustment, these, these boards that we're talking about tonight, active transportation. These are appointed by the mayor because the ordinance that have created the boards set it up that way. So that's why it's done in that way. So I just wanted to provide that information to you. I don't know if it's a question you've received or one that's in your mind, but where did you have it? So there you go.
Uh, another thing about the A and P, you know, there's two people that are from the city and four people that are from the industry, meaning lodging or restaurant industry, and then one at large. And correct me if I don't have this correct, Jason, but the A and P commission figures out who they want for the restaurant and lodging and for the at-large, but then council does vote on that.
That's correct. So in that particular situation, the A and P commission makes an appointment subject to approval of the council. So like I said with the other boards, if the, the A and P commission has a majority vote and they want to appoint John Doe, a restaurant owner, to be on the A and P commission, that comes to the council. The council has the lawful authority to vote that down, but they can't replace it with someone they would prefer. The A and P would have to come back with a different appointment. So that's, that's the way circumstance works on, on that commission with those, with those seats.
So anyway, those were the two people on the active transportation board and we'll, we'll split those out also and we'll send everybody all, all the resumes. Next one is item F, it's the appointment of two youth members in the Active Transportation Advisory Board. When we first set this up, we had two positions for minors and they're non-voting. But we, they thought it'd be a good idea to get, you know, the younger person's input. And both the people who started had very impressive resumes, but did one year and I guess they, they had enough apparently, so we have some new people here. So when you're looking at those transportation resumes, there's kind of two different categories. Here's minors and adults. Uh, Taylor Robertson?
I just wanted to clarify, our ex-officio members, they only have terms of one year. Um, so the actual participating members are three years appointments, but the ex-officios can only serve for one year at a time. So that's why we have two new people, we'll have two new people every year for those two.
Okay, yeah, I thought they just didn't want to re-up. That's good to know. Uh, next one is G, uh, I'm sorry, was there any more questions? I think I might have missed somebody. Shay?
Yes, thank you. Um, I was, I just had one other question regarding these appointments. I noticed most of them start on March first. If we were to decline any one person, would it have an impact on those boards and committees?
Uh, there, no, they would start when they were appointed and cleared and their term would end at the same time. So it's, it's a, it's a slot that goes from March one through, I guess, February, end of February, however many years down the road. So it, it, it might put them off a month having an empty position on their board, but it, it's not gonna change the starting and ending period of the term or anything like that.
Yeah, I was just worried it would have an impact on the function of those groups and committees. Is, that's more my question.
Well, that I can't answer. I don't, maybe Taylor or the mayor knows something more about that.
Uh, Taylor?
Uh, that's basically where I was headed. Um, it's just we would only have five of the planning commission and BZA, which that's still one more than we need for a quorum, but that's really the only thing. The Active Transportation Advisory Board doesn't approve or recommend anything. They're not an administrative body for you guys, they're an advisory committee, so that won't really affect anything. But the planning commission and BZA, that would reduce their votes for the March tenth meeting, if it's not approved in February.
And they do have a certain number of minimum votes that are required for adoption of certain items. So I, it, I mean, they still have enough members to do it, but I guess it could, if, if there were, if there was opposition, I guess it could have an effect, but wouldn't have to have an effect.
Yeah, Wendy?
Thank you so much. And who, what, what governing group chose the, or picked the applicants for the planning commission? Was it the planning department or was it the actual commission itself right now?
I asked Taylor Robertson to look at them and ask her opinion about, about some things.
Can I add to that, Mayor?
Sure. The, the mayor makes appointments to the planning. It's, it's not like the A and P commission. It, even though it's commission, it's totally different and it's, it's operated by city ordinance and it's as the mayor makes those appointments with approval of the council.
And so staff, as, as the mayor's staff, what we've done historically since I've been here, we'll make a selection committee for the planning commission. And now we also have the Active Transportation Advisory Board, but there's two selection committees that are made. We review and then we all rate and the ones with the, typically it's the top three that we recommend. We'll have the, obviously the top one if it has amount of votes, but we'll make our recommendation to the mayor, give him all of the applications for him to consider all of them if he wants. Staff just makes a recommendation to him, the selection committee does.
I will say, I, I like all the commissions and love the citizen involvement. In my opinion, the A and P commission and planning commission may be a little bit more important. And there's been times when city council had five people instead of six and it's a big deal. If, if there's anything at all, it has caused things to pass or fail, mostly fail. Because they have five instead of six, you'd think it wouldn't be that big a deal, but it can be. I've observed that personally, so. Anyway, you know, there's times somebody's off council and we just don't get them replaced right away. It's, it's surprising what a difference it makes, so. Because you need so many votes and now you have one less person to get them from, right? So anyway, I just relay my experience. Uh, the next one is G, resol- resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Laura Williams to the Bella Vista Arts Council to fill non-expire term, ending April twenty-two, twenty twenty-six. And this is due to the resignation, resignation of Gina Porter. Gina moved to Bentonville, so, so that's why she had to get off. It was unfortunate, she was doing a good job. But this is another one, had quite a few applications. And in this case, I rely quite a bit on the Denvera Tizer, who's the chairman of the commission. There's only three people on the arts council. And obviously, I think the people who are on the arts council should, should have some input into who's on it when they have a vacancy. So there's a lot of different things going to that, but, but we're getting some really good candidates. There's a lot of interest in the arts, which I think is great. So any questions about that? Anna?
Well, so it's just curious that you mentioned there's only three people on it. Is there any thought about expanding that group to just bring in more, sort of more voices and more input with so many, you know, people within the community that are interested in the arts?
That's an interesting thought. I don't know, historically, this was back when Peter was mayor. I remember when we started the arts council and I don't know how they came up with the number they had. Uh, Jason, you have any recall of that?
Uh, no, I'm afraid I don't remember. But I, I did not think we created any councils with only three people on them, but I'm, I'm trying to, I'm not on my regular computer to find my.
Does it just take a resolution to increase?
No, it would take an ordinance change.
An ordinance?
Yeah, we would have to do that to modify the, modify the arts council, how it's set up. Where is it? Um, well, it, I, I, so that's what, if we change the number, it would take an ordinance change and I'll work in the background, see if I can, I don't remember how. I, I remember a lot that I can't remember at all. I don't know what all we've done over the last fifteen years, but.
Yeah, I was trying to recall back the old council because it was three totally different, it was totally different people, but I was thinking it was still pretty small, but I'm just going by recall. Uh, that's an interesting point, actually, Anna, to, to consider. Thanks for bringing that up.
Um, let's see, I, I, I've, I've got pulled it up here. Let's see. You know, but we said it, it has three members according to section five thirty-one, so that's, that's the number we picked when we set it up, so, okay.
Okay, but we will look into that. I, I think that's an interesting thought. Next one is G, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Leo M. Ella Brock Company in the amount of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and one cent pursuant to a Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of fifteen sets of fire department bunker gear, protective firefighting clothing. Uh, if Chief Sims is on the line here, did you want to say a few words about that?
I can. This is something we order about every year. We try to order about fifteen to twenty sets. And through the Sourcewell contract or the competitive bid contract, we're able to get the same gear we're currently using, which we've had really good luck with the Honeywell Morning Pride gear that we currently use. So that's one of the reasons why it's, you know, that we can get it through this, this contract, which is good for us to be able to keep everything kind of uniform as we move forward. But that's something we, we typically do every year, is order about fifteen to twenty sets a turn out here.
Okay, any questions? Travis probably knows more about this than anybody else, so. Okay, next one is, uh, uh, item I, authorizing mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group of Silum Springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of one Ram fifteen-hundred four-by-four pickup truck in amount not to exceed forty thousand, five hundred for use by Code Enforcement Division of the Police Department. Chief Graves, did you want to say a few words on this?
This is a, a truck to replace one of the existing code enforcement trucks and we took code enforcement.
This is, uh, uh, a truck to replace one of the existing code enforcement trucks and we took code enforcement from CDS. We got three officers and three trucks and within six months, two of the trucks, um, just due to wear and tear and, and other engine problems, uh, became disabled. So, uh, just to replace one of those trucks, it's, it's within the twenty-twenty-five capital budget. So it's, uh, it's all accounted for. And this is a state bid contract, so we'll be getting it at state bid price.
Okay. Any questions on that? What do you, do you have a, a standard on this chief as far as, I know with the police cars usually, usually try to go a hundred and twenty thousand miles. Do you have any?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get as much as we can out of these. Uh, the other ones failed early. There was a problem with. With, with their engines and so, um, they were just, I, I don't know. I don't know if they're lemons or something. I mean, they were, they weren't near their mileage, but they just failed early. So. Um, but I imagine out of these trucks, uh, we'll, we'll probably run them, you know, a hundred and twenty, thirty, forty thousand miles. They're not emergency vehicles and still I don't mind running them longer because if they do end up failing on us, uh, it's, it's not in the middle of going to an emergency call. So I know we'll ha- we'll have these for, for years and years to come.
Yeah, well, I thought maybe they weren't driven quite as hard to, uh.
They're not, they're not.
Yeah, I was just curious, chief. I remember you telling us in the work session that. Uh, it was more appropriate that the code enforcement officers had pickup trucks versus any other type of vehicle, but. Um, I was wondering why that is. I'm not real sure what they would be hauling or.
Sure. So, so what we're doing is, um, prior to, uh, PD taking over code enforcement, we had an animal control officer. Which is also a city code ordinance for violation, all those, all those types of ordinances. So. What I decided to do is just to, to fold them all into one. So all of my code officers are also. Animal control officers in that they handle the animal type codes. And so. We do have an animal control truck. We'll keep that one. It's outfitted for, for, for picking up many animals. But, but each, uh, of these trucks will also be outfitted. With a, with the animal carrying capacity in the back so that each code officer can go out and handle animal calls if they do too. Plus, a lot of times if, uh, during, you know, different times, if we're picking up ele- election signs or things like that, they, they do need trucks to, to pick up, uh. I didn't mean to say election signs, but that just came to head. That just came, came to my mind. But, you know, when we, when we pick up items out in the field, they, they do need to be able to, uh, to, to haul them in trucks. So we just find trucks that are more advantageous to them. And believe it or not, trucks are actually cheaper than, than, uh, sedans, uh, for some reason they just are.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, next one's resolution J, amending the twenty-twenty-five city budget, the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars to reallocate funding. To complete the development code reform project. Uh, Taylor, I think this is in your area.
Um, just a few quick notes. Uh, our average bills, um, we're averaging from like ten thousand to twenty thousand a month. And in December, of course, after this budget was approved, we had a very unusual amount of only about nine hundred and seventy-five. Uh, for the entire month. And so all of that money that we didn't spend went back into the general fund. And so now we need to pull that back out and reallocate it to this year so we can finish out the contract that we have with Freece and Nichols. For our development code reform, but, um. That's really the gist of it. We over budgeted for twenty-twenty-four, had an unexpected tiny bill, and now we need to reallocate it so we can finish it out.
So, uh, was the code, uh. Reform contract, was that like a guaranteed maximum price type thing or?
Yeah, it was a maximum not to exceed two hundred and thirty-five, five hundred.
Yeah, okay. See any questions about that? Okay, next one is K, a resolution amending rules of order and procedure of the Bella Vista City Council to authorize virtual attendance by council members at regular meetings. Uh, no more than four times per calendar year. I think this was Anna. Is Belle was this year's?
Yep, this was mine. So if anyone has any questions or thoughts on it. Be open for it. But, yeah, I mean, here's a perfect example of, we're all on Zoom. Um, but if it weren't weather, if it were illness or travel or something else, um, I s-. I think we would all agree, we still want to be able to do our duty, attend meetings whenever possible. In person, but in the event that we can't be in person, that we're able to still be there and still, um, vote on these important issues.
I do have some comments on that.
Uh, go ahead, Greg.
Okay, uh. I guess, you know, to me, it seems a little, uh. Disingenuous to say that we already have these rules in place. I mean, that's kind of piggybacking on. A national disaster, you know, COVID. And then such as days like this, a, a snowstorm to where nobody, you know, those make sense. Um, you know, to me, ninety-nine point nine percent of being in this position is going up. And I understand, you know, being virtual. But. In my mind, I mean, that's, you're basically saying that. We're allowing a year of your term to be virtual. That's twenty-five percent. So if you go to your employer and you say you're gonna take three years of your first year of work. Virtually, I don't know many employers that would go along with that. Um. You know. I think at this point in time with government just in general, you know, people really don't trust them. And I don't know how people would feel showing up to a meeting. And seeing a bunch of split screens with all their council members up there. You know, or, or three or four or two or whatever it is. I think it's gonna give confusion. Uh, the perception of a quorum. I don't. You know, I don't really think that we have the demographic that. Would fully appreciate what this is, you know, what's being presented. Um. You know. The, the schedule, if I'm not mistaken, Wanda, the schedule is printed annually, correct? First of year.
Yes, uh-huh. It's published the end of November.
Right.
Every year, all of the meetings.
Yeah, so I mean, and that's kind of my thing. And even if you travel, and I understand that. But, you know, everybody has that schedule and, you know, if somebody needs to take your place. In order to be here, and I know this is not a full-time job, but. That's, that's part and parcel of being a council member. Please let me finish, Wendy. And, uh. You know, I just. I just can't get behind, you know, I could go for two times in an emergency situation. You know, easily, you know, work sessions, you know, just like this, we're all sitting around. Speaking basically internally, there's no public input, anything like that. So it's all conversations within ourselves. So, that I don't have a problem with. But as far as council goes. You know, I think it's really important that, that you are present, physically present in those meetings. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Uh, I see a Wendy, but Shay had her hand up a while ago, so I'll go with Shay first.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question, um, for clarification. Uh, when we say regular meetings, that, that would be our legislative sessions where we're voting? Um, is that? Uh, and so would this impact the work sessions at all?
Uh, I can answer that. Uh, it, this only, this, this is counts toward regular meetings. So, you know, work sessions are not, are not for debate. They're for gathering information. We don't take a role. There's no quorum requirement. We, we have a public meeting because we have to do that to comply with F O I, so everyone knows and we can. Kind of tell everybody what's going on in a less formal way. But this, this rule, uh, only applies toward, uh. It, it, it would only affect regular council meetings. So, uh, we don't really address, um. Uh, uh, we, we don't address this proposed rule in terms of work session. Uh, the, the, the new rule would only apply limited to four on the regular, uh, like, as you call it legislative or regular, our regular meetings.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Wendy?
Thank you so much. Um, just. I support this for a few reasons. One, I know that in the past two years, I personally had to miss meetings because of COVID. Where I felt fine, but I didn't want to infect my fellow council members. Or because there was a, when, there's a special meeting during a winter snow event and Jerry and I could not. Vacate our homes safely to get to the session. It would have been excellent to have been able to like. Attend virtually. Um, also, I know there's been circumstances in the past couple of years where council members haven't slept through a meeting. Or had been, forgot the meeting was happening. And so that'd be beneficial if that happened. They could get in quickly and. Not miss the meeting when they were fully capable of probably doing the job. Um. I think. We are really underestimating our demographics if we don't think they can facilitate and understand Zoom. And the ability to have. Hybrid meetings. We've, other cities do it easily. Um, across the state, across the country. And I think. If we. Make it where. People who might have work that might have to travel sometimes. Can't run for office because they can't guarantee they're gonna be there every single time, button seat. But they can be in front of their screen, working from their, wherever they at in the world. Or if Travis is on call and he can't make it because he's a firefighter. He can still physically get on a screen and do his job opposed to being physically in the building if he has to. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, in fairness to Anna, I do want to mention that, uh, Wendy had brought this up once or twice last fall. So a couple of different people brought it up, but I would like to get input from either John Mokel or Sydney Reynolds. Uh, after the, it was brought up in the work session last month, I did contact them. About it. And, uh, so I wanted to get a few words from them.
Sure, yeah, thank you, uh, for that. Uh. First of all, you know, we're gonna be supportive of, uh, you know, whatever the council wants to do. And we have taken a, a inclusive approach to. The technical aspects. We talked to, uh, David Todd. Uh, you know, who's been doing our live streaming and wanted to have a meeting and get hi- uh, his input and. Listen to some professional designers and really give everybody a, a voice at the table so we can come up with the best possible solution. So I'll let, uh, Sydney, uh, fill you in on the technical aspects of that, but, uh, it mainly comes down to quality, you know, what, um. Kind of production quality do you want to have and, um. And all that, but, uh, Sydney, I'll turn it over to you now and let you, uh, give everybody the technical update.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I wanted to provide an update on, uh, we've been working on this for a couple of weeks. Um, before the public safety was, building was built. The AV system was originally designed. For district court video arrangements and not live TV production. So right away, uh, the, uh, TV station noted that. There could be some improvements in camera angles and. Lapel mics, fast switching unit for polished broadcast. But. Uh, additionally. We, uh, took a look at. What other cities and counties do. And, uh. Springdale and Washington County. And, uh. City of, uh, Bentonville, they'll do two cam- two fixed camera angles. So currently Bella Vista TV streams meetings live on YouTube. With hybrid Zoom meetings, they would also send an audio and video to remote participants. Council members. Will see and hear remote attendees via the existing screens and sound system. But would need to upgrade the existing system first. We have the option. To use the. The current TV feed or add cameras for the Zoom participant. Our plan is to work with the vendor and TV station to develop two options. One for essential mic and sound system upgrades for hybrid Zoom and another for the full polished upgrade. Any questions on that?
You know, what kind of cost would be associated with that?
Uh, I, I know at this time, we should now, hopefully by next week. So we can, uh, present some idea to you.
I do have one other thing to say if nobody else does.
Go ahead, Greg.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate. I mean, I have no problem with, you know, uh. You know, uh, personal emergency, things like that. Um, you know, I'd support two times a year, but outside of that, I can't get behind that.
I, I just, uh, the reason I wanted IT to speak was I was concerned we might pass something. Before we're technologically ready to actually.
Well, and that's the other side of it. If we don't have the infrastructure, then it's a whole lot of confusion and people are having problems with the feed and then it's, then it's all a jumble. You know, I mean. Once we have it established, that's one thing, but, you know, try to, you know. Figure it out as, feel our way around as we go, you know, it just, it. You know, the optics of things, it's just gonna look ham-handed, you know, if we just kind of. You know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't or whatever, but that's what I mean is that I just. I just can't say it enough that, you know. Everybody can schedule. One meeting, once a month, anywhere. And if you can't go on a business trip because of it, they, I'm sure they've got somebody that they could send in your place. And that's, you know, that's just part and parcel to this job. That's all I have.
So, anyway, uh. I, I, uh. Thought maybe we should hold off just a little bit till we get the technology nailed down. The other point I wanted to make is, uh. Because there was a good question about the work sessions. I believe with the work sessions in the room they're in. That it's not conducive to this, that we might, if we wanted to have the work sessions where you could be remote, we might need to, uh. Uh. Go in the, go in the other room. The courtroom.
Mayor, if I could say one more thing just to kind of clarify. Um, so what we have now. Could work. And would work to some extent, cause. The system that we have is designed to be easy for the, the court clerk and. Those type of people to come in. They come in, they push the start button and everything just turns on. All the microphones are preset. And it works great for presenting to the live audience. But David Todd was saying that, um, because it's all programmed to work off of an easy button. That gives him a lack of control. So if someone's not leaning into the microphone, they're not speaking up loud enough. He has no way to help because it's all. Kind of configured on the, the, an easy button setting. So that's why he's asking for these upgrades, uh, to be made.
Okay, so, any more questions on that or comments on that topic? Anna?
Yep, just one more. Um, I appreciate that the calendar is. Published, um, at the end of November and I'll just, um, also state for the. The other folks, uh, in the meeting or as part of the city council that. The school calendar is posted well in advance and so families have to plan around, um, different. You know, events and issues with school, um, for those of us that have children in school, which would be a top priority as well as serving the city. Um, and then in terms of, um, business, travel and such, I'm not sure what Craig does for a living, but. Um, a lot of us have to juggle, um. Responsibilities and so having the hybrid opportunity would allow us to not only meet our. Um, requirements for our careers, but would also allow us to meet the requirements necessary to be a good city council member. And to be present, um, whether it's virtual or in person. But the goal is to be in person as often as possible. This is just in the rare occasion. Um, that someone isn't able to attend due to an emergency or a last minute. Um, perhaps illness or, or whatever the case might be.
I can understand two times, but twenty-five percent of the time are trying to. Legitimize. Being absent or being virtual, twenty-five percent of the time. I just, I don't understand that. Anyway. That's all I have.
Actually, four out of twelve is thirty-three and one-third percent of the time, but.
My apologies. I would, I, I got my math wrong. I'm an engineer. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state, um, I, I su- support this and I do understand that four could seem excessive. Um, I just want to remind fellow council members. I just want to remind fellow council members that unfortunately, at the end of his term, Mr. Wozniak was unable to attend several meetings because of his physical injuries. But I'm sure that had he been given a virtual option, he would have wholeheartedly participated with all of the vigor that Mr. Wozniak always provided. So, yeah. And just want to reiterate that I believe Councilmember Harp's work, you know, maybe sending someone else in might not always be an option for Councilmember Harp.
Travis? Travis?
Yeah, I, I support this also and I understand what Craig is saying. But you have to remember the demographics have changed in the city of Bell Vista and on the council because three retired members got replaced by three working professionals. And like you said, there's a, there's a class coming up that I was selected for that is extremely hard to get into. And I assure you, I am not sending anybody in my place to that. So there's, there's, there's going to be a time this year where I won't be able to attend in person, but it should be minimal.
Okay, thank you. I, I can't resist a short history lesson. Well, you know, we had meetings like this during COVID and it was because the governor had an emergency. Otherwise you weren't allowed to do it. And then later on, that COVID emergency went away, but they changed the state law a little. And Jason Kelly gave us all a speech about how we could have a possibility of Zoom meetings. So I was the only one that took them up on that the next month. I, I presented that we have a Zoom meeting. I think the only person on council back then probably was Larry Wills. And anyway, it was surprisingly hard to get that passed. It surprised me. I said, hey, you know, but there might be another pandemic or it could be a big snow or something. And it was quite a struggle to get that. I don't remember who was for it and who was against it. But I remember it barely passed. It was quite a struggle. So anyway, this might be the first time we've used it, first or second time. I think we might have used it for an emergency meeting fairly quickly. But I was particularly worried about emergency meetings when you hear about them three days ahead. And you know, people could be out of town visiting relatives or working or whatever, right? So anyway.
If I could just say one thing on, on the exhibit, there's a resolution, then there's the exhibit, which is the actual proposed rule. It, it's now got a rule 10A and B. Currently that A is the rule and that's all of rule 10. And then the B is the new part. So to make it, you know, work, we make the existing part A and the new part B. So that A part is already our rule and the B is really the, the new part that you're looking at.
So, okay. Just to clarify from one of the IT guys, so if this passed next week, would we be able to do it? Or do we need to do something in order to be able to technically do this?
The answer to that is you could do it, but David Todd would not be happy. He lacks control over the current system because all the audio levels are preset to make it easy for the court clerk and things like that. And he doesn't have any way to adjust them. So if the volume's a little too low for Zoom, there's nothing he can do to help you until we make upgrades. But, you know, it would work.
So we'd have a person on Zoom. We might not be able to hear them very well or they might not be able to hear us very well or something like that.
Potentially, yeah. And David Todd wouldn't have any way to adjust that at the current time.
Yeah.
It'd just be as good as it is.
Sure.
Until we make upgrades.
John, can I ask you a question? Because I'm familiar with the courtroom, of course. The, the, the audience is going to have to be able to see the remote member as well as the remote member to be able to see what's going on. Would one of the, of course, and on the screens now we've got like the agenda or, you know, there could be a document up there. Is there going to be a way to split that off so you could see an ad, a, a hybrid attendee while another screen is showing a document or, you know, sort of thing?
Yeah, that's not too hard to do. What we will have to do is, I guess Wanda or whoever displays the agenda, they would have to do that through Zoom if we were using, if we had a hybrid meeting. So they would use the screen share function of Zoom and then it would toggle automatically between the speaker and the, whatever was on the screen share.
And what we'll do is we'll work on coming up with the best plan and presenting it and do some testing ahead of time.
Okay, that'd be great. I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think we've covered that one. The next one is L, a resolution mending the rules of order and procedure of the Bell Vista City Council to create a consent agenda procedure for approval of certain items to promote efficiency in the conduct of meetings. This is Shay Newport.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I proposed this, just understanding how other municipalities will run their meetings. And this, to be clear, this is only for resolutions. And so for, this would not apply to ordinances and it would allow us to group several like resolution items together and just pass those with one vote rather than several individual votes, which should really streamline things. I think this city council intends to be proactive, propose a lot of items and really move our city forward, which will take time. And I would like for that time to be spent on items we need to discuss rather than just repetitive votes for things that we all support. If you've read the item at all, it does make an allowance for any time we would like to pull one of those items out and individually discuss it. We can do that. It only takes one council member to make that change and, and pull that out of the consent. So sorry if I misspoke on any of that, Mr. Kelly, but that was my intention behind the proposal and why I think it's a great idea.
No, you, you didn't misspeak at all and that's what you communicated to me and that's what I tried to draft. So really what, it does exactly what Ms. Newport said. The only thing I would add is that the, the approval of your minutes would also be a part of the consent agenda unless someone wanted to vote separately. So really the way I think it's envisioned this would work is like, for example, our agenda tonight, we've got, and maybe it's a bad example because we had a lot of talk about it. But let, let's just say we had a resolution that appointed someone to a board. We had a resolution that approved a contract to buy a pickup truck. And we had a resolution to appoint an arts council member. So what we could do is, you know, we'll know at the work session, kind of, whether there are questions in general. And then what kind of what we would envision seeing is the mayor or the clerk or myself or someone would say, you know, are we good putting this on consent? And so if, you know, if everybody's good, then we'll put it on consent. And then when you come up for your regular meeting, there'll just be consent agenda. There's no debate on the consent agenda and it would just be motion to approve the consent agenda, second and a vote. If you want to have any discussion at all, you may be in favor of it, but you still want to discuss it. At the regular meeting, you know, you could always change your mind and all you've got to say is, Mayor, item three, I want to pull that out of consent agenda and put that on new business, fine. And then we'll vote on whatever's left in consent agenda. And then that, that item that had been pulled out would be, then be voted on and discussed independently and could be debated. So, but there's no debate in the consent agenda and one vote. And so hopefully you, some of these, you know, I would say non-controversial things are, are things that everyone's generally consents to. That's why you call it consent. It, you know, it's kind of all okay. Nobody's got a big problem. Then we can put all that together and save a lot of roll call votes. And I'm sure Wanda is going to be in favor of that. So that's what this rule does. And so it creates, in the exhibit is the rule change. And then, so rule seven deals with this. Seven, seven B is going to be amended to add a subsection two. So I'll just read it to you very briefly. Consent agenda, any item of business requiring a vote of the city council that is not a proposed ordinance, including but not limited to action on the minutes or a proposed resolution, may be placed on a consent agenda for approval. Consent agenda items shall be voted upon as a group without discussion by the city council. If a council member wishes to comment upon or discuss a consent agenda item, that item shall be removed and considered immediately after the consent agenda has been voted upon. So that's, that's the text of the rule. And then the change to seven C is a, is a modification to your order of business to take out, because minutes are always going to be a part of your consent agenda. That may be the only thing you got, but it'll be in there. And then it takes out the separate line for approval of the minutes because it's going to be included. So that just modifies the sections of your meeting. So it's accounted for appropriately. And that's what the rule does.
Craig Honcho?
The only question I have, how does that affect public input? Do we have to pull it off? I mean, if, if somebody gets up there, public input, do we have to pull that out of the consent to address that since it's not a discussion item at that point? Or what is, how does that work?
Well, keep in mind, we don't do things the way they do them in vehicles. So we don't have public comment on, on every.
That's why I'm asking.
So, I mean, we have our public comment period. They may talk about why the sky is blue or they may talk about one of the items on the, what would be on the consent agenda.
Right.
If, I mean, it, it doesn't have to be pulled off consent. And if they want to talk, they can talk about whatever they want. That doesn't alter this. That's not debate. That's just public comment. But it could be after hearing a public comment, you or another member might say, you know what, let's just pull that off and talk about that separately. And then you're one person, you can do that. And then it would, it would be a separate vote on that.
And that's all I'm getting at. It's just, just clarification for how that process would work if we need to pull it off. You know, if somebody comes in, they have a problem with whatever's on the agenda, you know, resolution. I just want to make sure everybody understands that, you know, because if they don't pull it off before we vote and since we can't have discussion, I just don't want anybody getting tripped up and after it's voted on and say, hey, wait a minute. I thought we were going to talk, you know, to this person's concern and it's already, you know, it's already too late. That's what I was.
Yeah. So, so remember, you know, we, so you've got your call to order, the invocation, pledge, roll call, then the public comments and then response to public comments. So you, you can, you could respond and say something at that time if you wanted to. And then the reports and then the consent. So the way it would, I mean, I think, I'm not going to tell the mayor how to do it, but, but I think he would give, there would be the reports and then he would say, okay, we're going to move the consent agenda. You know, kind of give a look. Okay, no one's moving anything. I'll take, I'll hear a motion to approve. And then, you know, at, at that point, it'd be a time to get the mayor's attention and say, Mayor, I want to pull item C off and let's do that separate, okay? And, and then move forward. So there would be an opportunity for you to do something if public comments spurred you to want to do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's out there. So, thank you.
Well, I would, I'll call on you in a second. I would think in, as a practical matter, what might happen is we'd be at the work session before we even got to the meeting and somebody would say, hey, wait a minute. I don't think that should be consent agenda. You know, even though it's not a formal vote, then we could take it out. Wouldn't be in there the next week. You know, even before we get to the real meeting.
That, that's right. And, and, you know, we, we would know that. So the city clerk would know, just to go ahead and set that up as a, as an item of new, you know, first item of new business after the consent agenda. Well, actually, you wouldn't have to do it then that, you could just put it in new business and do it separately. So yes, chances are we are going to know that before we even set the agenda for the regular meeting. And well, hopefully we would, because we'll talk about it at work session.
Yeah. But if you missed the work session or didn't think to object, you'd still, as a council member, you'd still have a shot at, at the regular meeting anyway.
You, you do. A council, I, I mean, I'm not, a, a, a council member could come to the regular meeting. Maybe they don't know, may, I always think about these rules in terms of, there's going to be all different people on the agenda and it's 20 years from now and none of us are here and it's all a different group of people. It's not hard to imagine. We may have some council member someday that just, they want to vote on everything independently. So when it comes to a consent agenda, that, that all, that council member could say, I want to vote on everything separately. Okay, then they could. But hopefully it wouldn't come to that. But really the rights of the members to vote on individual items is totally preserved. Nothing's going to get grouped in and I couldn't do anything about it. That's not going to happen. All they've got to do, they didn't have to have a majority vote of people to pull it off the consent agenda, any one of them. All they got to do is before we vote on the consent agenda, say they want to pull it off the consent agenda and, and we'll vote on it separately.
Okay. Larry Wills?
I guess an interesting observation is if we were to take our meeting tonight that's looking for next week, all of our new business are resolutions. So theoretically, some of them are dealing with spending money out of our budget, which has been approved. But this is an act that we need to do individually, I think per state statutes. But all of the items in new business are all resolutions. So would they, as a result of that, be consummated if we have a work session like tonight? And we're pretty much in, appearing to be in agreement with each of these, that all of them would appear on a single consent agenda?
Well, they, they, they could. Any resolution could. Now ordinances cannot because they have a three reading requirement. So you, you can't do that. But they, if, if our rules provide for us to have a consent agenda, we can group items as long as they're voted on by roll call, they, you can do it that way. That, assuming any one of you have the right to pull it off and to have a separate vote on one that you may think just ought to be voted on separately or because you don't like that one. And you want to vote no to that one, but you don't have a problem with the other ones. That would be the main reason why you'd want to pull it off consent, I think. But yes, it's going to be resolutions that are items that do not require multiple readings. And you, you're going to know about it at the work session. So you could, you know, I, I'm not trying to create problems for anybody, but let's just say you'd like, well, you know, Steve's spending a lot of money on these, on this bunker gear. I want to talk about that one. Well, okay, so we'll just pull that off. But you could, you could choose that about any of them. Your right is totally preserved. There can always be an individual vote on any of them. So to answer your question, yes, any, any resolutions could be added to the consent agenda.
Well, I, I'd like to interject. I, actually, I think this week's res, agenda isn't a very good example because usually there's some things that are very perfunctory. And I was aware for, I came tonight that some people were concerned about the appointments. So as an example, I wouldn't put that on. I wouldn't put anything on a consent agenda to change the budget. Even one like today is only 11 grand. I, I just, I, I wouldn't abuse this, I guess. I'd try to use it for things that are, you know, usually we have two, three things that are pretty obvious, pretty perfunctory. And, and tonight we don't. We have a lot of things that you knew there'd be discussion and are, you know, out of the box a little bit. Wendy, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. This is a prior, a very silly question. Would this also include the motion, we had every meeting, we're to suspend the rules and let the chair read it? Or is that separate every time?
No, that's a procedural vote and that would have to be separate. That's not approved. This, this is, this is going to be just approval of business items. It's not going to be a procedural vote.
How do we get rid of that?
You can't. State law requires, state, I know. State law requires us to read ordinances on three, in full, three different, on three different days unless the rules are suspended. And so we suspend the rules just to authorize the mayor to read the title. And so, and then sometimes you'll suspend the rules and go ahead and go to the third and final readings so you can do it all in one day, which we do separately. But we do that just to be able to read the title. And I don't really know of a way around that unless state, unless you want to talk to your legislator. And, and, and good luck because every, I'm, this is one of those things we've done in state municipal government in this state since the founding. I'm not sure it's ever going to change, but I understand.
That was a good thought, Wendy. Good try. Shay?
So I just wanted to add for clarification that basically if this were to pass, right, in future work sessions, the mayor would decide which items or he would intuit which items would be on the consent agenda. And then that would be the case moving forward, right?
Well, I mean, the mayor can certainly ask, get a consensus of the council on it and just informally ask, you know, is anybody going to object if we put this on consent? Just so we kind of have an idea when we make the agenda. But you still have the right at the regular meeting, change your mind and say, no, I want to vote on that one separately. So none of your rights are compromised. But yes, I think we're going to get a glimpse at the work session about how to set up this agenda to know, you know, how to work it. So.
Okay. I think. I think we've gotten an idea about that. Next one is discussion items. The first one is recycling options for Bella Vista residents. And Jennifer Fagan of Republic indicated that she didn't want to do this by Zoom. So we'll probably have to kick this, we'll have to kick this to next month. It happened. I didn't speak to her. She spoke to Cassie Lapp because they always confer when the garbage is delayed or canceled. Cassie has to put out a notice about that. So I don't know if she ever spoke to you or not, Travis. I understand you traded phone calls, but that's what happened. She was on the phone with Cassie today for another reason and said, hey, I don't want to do that on Zoom. I'd like to do it in person. So, so we'll go to discussion item N, which is Citizen and Employee of the Month. And this is Shay Newport.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to open up a discussion to see if this is anything we would be interested in having a resolution on. I don't intend for city council to necessarily even make either of these selections or both, but I, I just think there are so many wonderful things that go on in our city. There are so many citizens and, and staff employees that go above and beyond in their role. And I would love for those stories to be told and for us to celebrate citizens and, and employees who really go above and beyond. So I don't really intend for this to be any more formal than that. I don't want city council to vote on who, who, who is or isn't worthy of that or even necessarily make the selections. But I would just like for our monthly regular sessions to have a moment of reflection in them where we celebrate someone who's really making a difference in our community. So that's my intent. Just wanted to open that up for discussion, see if that was of interest to anyone else.
Well, before I call on people, I'm not too enthused about the employee of the month part. And I talked to Glenda Kelderman in Human Resources. I have a lot of confidence in her instincts and she wasn't too enthused about that particular aspect either. I think your motives are pure, but, you know, the, we have such disparate sections of the city and the fire department already has all kinds of things they do with their people and the police department has all kinds of things they do with their people, different awards and whatnot. So I was a little reluctant from that point of view. I don't know about citizen of the month. I'll throw it open for other people. Larry, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. My thought is, is that I think it's a little too often. And then the question is, how is that individual going to be proposed or recommended and who's going to be the reviewing body and all sorts of things related to it? That's 12 times a year that you deal with a citizen. So you need someone to select the citizen, nominate them, and then a, a, a group or whatever to review. The same thing with the city employee. And I, I agree with, with Mayor Flynn that because of the variations between all of our departments and functions of them, there's some camaraderie in the police department doing things like that, some camaraderie in the fire department doing things like that. It makes it difficult, makes it difficult, I think, to include those two groups with the rest of the city members. And then you have the, how, how do they get proposed and who takes the time to do that away from productive work of the employees? So I, I think it's, I think the, the, the thought is very good and it's very pure and it's idealistic, but I, I think practically it's, it's too frequent. An employee of the month, or an employee of the year or citizen of the year. In past communities, I've, I've dealt with citizen of the year as being a big, big to-do, a big celebration in the community. And it took a lot to get on that and get nominated and selected. So you had to be outstanding in, in your involvement with the community to become citizen of the year. But I, I, I would support that move. Employee of the year, again, with our varied functions, I think that might be a difficult thing because of the different responsibilities of each department. Thank you.
Anna?
I think I agree a little bit with the employee part of it. I don't, I don't want to get into the employee sort of reward and relations part of it, but I do love the idea, particularly recognizing some of our nonprofit partners throughout Bella Vista. And, you know, if the frequency is, you know, too often, if that's the thought, then maybe it's a quarterly nonprofit that we're recognizing. And what I like about the recognition is it just brings more awareness to some of the nonprofits and maybe helps them grow in their mission. And so I think it's definitely worth more discussion. I really like the idea of, you know, just endearing the community and showing them our appreciation for the things that, you know, folks are doing or nonprofits are doing to support the residents of Bella Vista.
Yeah, we'd have to give some thought to criteria and things like that. There are some great citizens in Bella Vista, no doubt. So maybe that's something we could, that gives more thought to. Did you want to say something, Wendy?
I agree with spacing out the frequency. I think maybe every month might be a challenge with the citizen of the month. I don't think we should get in the business of employee of the month. That gets a little dicey and a little maybe out of our purview. But citizen of the month, I think that if we spaced it out to quarterly or annually, I think that's, we have some incredible citizens and nonprofits in our area who are just doing such great work. And I think celebrating them, it does all the good.
Okay. So that's something we'll continue to look into and talk about a little bit. I did have one more item and that had to do with Bella Vista's credit rating. I have a little story behind this. So Standards and Fours is one of the three credit rating agencies and they're apparently the one that does city, city level sales tax type things. They call it S and P Global Ratings. So we had somebody from S and P who, apparently they round up with you every few years when you have a bond, try and figure out about your credit rating. And a guy named Kevin Fought with Stevens, Inc., was one of the companies who funded our bond, our 2020, a 1% bond. So he helped Kim Hall and I with the call. They give you a bunch of questions and you write down answers to that ahead of time. And then we had a call about it. And everybody made it quite clear to us that we were, we were rated AA minus. And that's the same thing Bentonville is and Rogers is and the bigger cities in Northwest Arkansas. Everyone made it quite clear to us, there is no way our rating was going to change. No way it was going to go up in particular. So you got to love Kim Hall's personality when you get to know her. She was undaunted. After the review, made a big argument about how our rating should be better. And the main thrust of her argument was the bond was supposed to go until 2045, but the initial projections was that it would be paid off in 2031. And now they're saying it'd be paid off in October 2027. So that means our sales tax was way better than they thought it would be. In fact, our, in 2019, right before we got the bond, our sales tax was 1.9 million. And now it's right around 4 million or a little more. So more than doubled. And so her argument was, well, if it's being paid off faster, our rating must be better. And then I kind of piled on and said, you know, because we're building 500 or 600 houses a year and because the internet tax, sales tax has become such a big part, that we're bound to go up. I mean, we're just going to go up every year because we're going to have 500 or 600 more households buying things, right? Some of it local, but some of it online. And so we did, we had our argument and then they said, oh, we'll get back to you in a few weeks and we just, okay, that was done. That was fun. So we were quite shocked last week when they got back and raised our credit rating to AA from AA minus, because we were assured that there was absolutely no chance that would happen. So I'll just read you the first paragraph. There's a little report. I can send all of you a copy. S and P Global Ratings raised its long-term rating to AA from AA minus on Bella Vista, Arkansas's Series 2020 Sales and Use Tax Refunding and Improvement Bonds. The outlook is stable. The upgrade reflects a sustained trend of increasing pledge revenue, leading to strong maximum annual debt service coverage and rapid repayment of debt, given a closed lien and the ability to redeem the bonds early. But, you know, they had all kinds of information about our financial statements and everything. So, you know, made us feel good about things. And the guy at Stevens said, the next time we borrow, it would definitely affect the rate, interest rate and what we have to pay in a positive way. So, so we felt good about it and I thought I'd give you that good news. Figured we could end on a high note.
Wendy?
All right, I have like eight screens. It's like Starship Enterprise in here. So I have two quick things, maybe not so quick. One, I'll do both and then you guys will be able to answer them. One, I know that there are several vacancies coming up with the library advisory board. Do we know when those applications will be up and ready for the community? And two, if like two council members wanted to co-sponsor or collaborate together on ordinance or a resolution or an amendment, what is, how do we, I know we did, I know it's FOIA, it's very complicated. We talked to Jason about it a little bit. What's up in the process? Do we make that known? And how do we do that so we can make sure that we can do that properly on the up and up?
I, I can answer that, Mayor. I would, and, and Wanda's on the call as well, but the city clerk can send out a notice as long as she's got two hours' notice, that there's going to be two members of the, of the council that are going to be meeting at a very, at a location to discuss city business regarding, you know, general, whatever. I mean, you could just say regarding city business. And, and make sure that the location where the meeting is conducted is a place where the public and the media can attend. Then she'll, she can, the city clerk can send that out to the media outlets and those that have requested be notified. And you can have a little meeting. And it doesn't require, I mean, just if, if two of you want to get together and talk about whether you want to do something. I mean, it doesn't even have to involve the staff or the mayor or myself or, or any of them if it's just, you know, and y'all are very good, this group is about wanting to follow the FOI and I really appreciate that. And so I can tell you in other towns, they just call one another on the phone, work it out. But we know you're not supposed to do that and everybody's trying to follow the rules. And that's good and I appreciate that. So, and it's very easy to follow the rules. All we got to do, you got to get two hours' notice. So even if you decide, you know, that you want to do it, it gets a little awkward because you almost got to coordinate a time and talk about that in order to set it up. But, you know, say at, at this work session, you, you and, and Ms. Newport say, hey, we want to, let's, would you, could you do something next, you know, a week from Monday to a, or something? We'll see. There would be opportunities where you could talk about that and set something up. You know, the clerk could. I would say act as an intermediary, but really can't do that either. But so I, I guess, if you think, Ms. Hughes, that you want to work with someone on something, you want to have a meeting. I, I guess if you're, the only purpose is to set a time and a place for the meeting, you could contact the clerk. The clerk could coordinate that time with, among the members and then, and, and send out that notice for you.
So I guess, confirming, if we needed to utilize you, your organs or resources, whatever, let's say Mr. Honchel and I wanted to work together on something.
Okay.
And we're like, yes, we know, we want, we're both interested in X, Y, and Z. Have a passion for it. We want to do this and solve this. Would like one of us take the lead and be like, hi, we want to schedule this with you, Jason. When's the appropriate time for you?
Yeah, I mean, I would appreciate that if I need to be there because I, I may have something on the calendar, I may be in court or something. So I, I, I think, I don't know that, that that part of it has to be that formal and just other than consideration of people and their time. You know, I can certainly tell Wanda, hey, I think, I think Wendy and Craig want to meet. Could you, and, and, and sort of handle that as long as we're not talking about business? I'm, I'm sure there's a way we could sort that out.
Yeah.
I guess my only question would be, how do you know you want to work together on something unless you've talked about it? And, and so people are going to raise a question. So I, I guess if you have a thought, you want to work with somebody on something in the future and you know about that now, this, this would be a great opportunity while we're having this discussion time to mention that and see if we can set something up and then we know to work on that.
Is there a way to facilitate, like, especially the, the new build coming up, being finished sooner than later, like office hours? Or like, just know that, hey, I'm going to be in the office every, available at City Hall every Thursday from 3:30 to 5:00?
Yeah.
And if Travis was like, hey, I'm also going to be available at the office, public notice, we might, we might talk. Is that, is that something? I don't know.
As long as you've got public notice, two hours before you get together, no matter what the circumstances are, and the public can attend, the media's notified, the media can attend, and, and there's going to need to be recording. I think we're going to have that recording requirement. So we'll have to make sure somebody can.
Do a voice note.
Make a voice memo or something and, and save it. But there doesn't have to be minutes and it doesn't have to be on video and it doesn't have to be zoomed, even though I guess you could do that, but we've kind of chatted about that issue already. There, there's a way to do it. And, and Wanda, I don't want to speak for you too much because I know you're, you're not in the office every day and, and I, I guess just as, and so certainly she should, should chime in if she has something she would input in that. But just as much, don't wait till two hours before because that's going to be, we have to send the notice out two hours before and, you know, it's going to take a little effort to get it together. So maybe if you know a few days before we could do that, it would be helpful.
Okay. So like, I think that Craig wanted to work on dark sky things and it's a passion of his, like dark skies and environmentally friendly things. I also love that. He and I could coordinate at a work session, a time and go from there. Okay.
Sure. We, we've done that sort of thing before where we're going to have a couple of members talk about trash or talk about recycling or talk about street or talk about what you name it and work out something and, and kind of set it up in that way. So I think that's what you're saying and we've kind of done that before.
Are you talking about getting library advisory board members?
I, I think Wanda wanted to talk about something, ooh, that too.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have my face on here. I just wanted to say, if I just could chime in, as Jason said, that for the clerk, it's important that I know as soon as possible for those impromptu meetings so that I can, because I don't work every day in the office, but I am always available by text. And I know you have my text. The other thing is Jason also mentioned audio. By law, it needs to be, it needs to be recorded and I would prefer that would be on my city recorder because I need to save those. I save those in Laserfish for a year. If anybody asks, they have the right to, to them and I need to have them available. That's all I wanted to mention.
Mayor, I see Glenda's got, she's on the call, got her hand up. I don't know if there's something that she needs to offer about this or?
Yes, can you hear me okay? Okay, the only thing I want to throw out there, Wendy, you had said something like, we might have office hours, like certain days that we would be available. One thing, until we get moved into that new space that's being built, we have very, very limited availability of a space at City Hall. So just kind of keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Oh, I was asking you if you're talking about getting new library advisory board members? You said something about the advisory board.
I understand that a few of them have tendered the resignations. And I didn't know when that, Cassie might know this, when we might be getting. I, um, understand that a few of them have, um, tendered the resignations. And I didn't know, um, when that, I don't, Cassie might know this, uh, when we might be getting that application out to the public, um, just to get that, those spots filled.
Oh, yeah, actually, we were gonna meet this morning, but 'cause of the weather, we didn't. So we're gonna meet, I think, Friday morning.
Thank you.
Okay, is, anybody have anything else?
Mayor, it's Cassie. I just have one more thing to add. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to circle back really quick to Jen Fagan with Republic Services. Um, she, it wasn't that she just didn't want to appear on the Zoom, not, at the meeting because it was over Zoom, but since she was talking about, um, recycling and she understands that that is something that a lot of people are very passionate about. She did not have a functioning camera on her computer and so she didn't feel comfortable ma- um, not being seen so that information wouldn't get construed one way or the other. And she wanted to make sure that everyone could converse with her and ask their questions because it is a topic that people are very passionate about. So I just wanted to circle back and, um, mention that just for her sake.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody have anything else? Okay, uh, if not, then we're adjourned and we'll, uh, meet hopefully in person next Monday at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much for your attendance.
Wanda, if you can still hear me, I'm gonna send you some, these resolutions, we're gonna split out on the appointments. I'll email those to you tomorrow morning at some point. And we'll have separate ones on each of these, uh, vacancies, on each of these various boards that we've got on the agenda, so.
Okay, I, can you hear me, Jason?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I can, um, get those done from home easily. And that means that we'll have several more resolutions in new business.
Yeah, I think maybe three. Uh, uh, there's the, um.
Right. Which ones? It would be Resolution D, E, F and, and G as well?
E, yes.
Okay.
Well, it looks like G is already, uh, just one, so.
Oh, that's right. So it would just be D, E, and F.
Yeah, so there'll be three, three new ones, three additional ones. We'll take those out and, and split them out, okay?
Okay, great. One quick question regarding consent voting. I'm going to need to probably create a new section in the agenda from the way I see things that will say, um, consent vote or consent resolutions. So we'll need to talk about that.
Well, we've gotta, we've, they've gotta approve the rule first, so.
Right, I'm just thinking ahead and how we're gonna have a procedure for that because that would be important.
I, I think it's probably gonna, we're getting in nuts and bolts a little bit for everybody, but I, I think that our, our Civic Plus may need to, our, our structure on that might need to be changed just a little bit and, and, uh, to do that. But, uh, anyway, let, let's, let's see if they wanna do it first and then.
Right, we can go from there.
Yeah.
No, I'm not worried about it. It, it'll be easy to do on Civic Plus. It'll just be a procedure.
Okay, all right. All right, well, stay warm, everybody. Thank you.